We have with us tonight the pastor Phil Robey from Amazing Grace Fellowship, who will deliver the invocation.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this day of life we have enjoyed. Thank you for your abundant grace and mercy. Father, bless this meeting, each of these supervisors, county officials, and their subordinates, as they engage in the business of Frederick County and its citizens. Father, I ask that a spirit of gratitude would permeate all of our lives. And Lord, once again, thank you for all your blessings. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Vice Chairman DeHaven, you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand and face the flag of the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Option of the agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are no additions.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tab, Tab E., which is the Parks and Recreation Commission Report.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Supervisor Wells makes the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is approved. Mr. Riley, are there any citizens who signed up for comments?
No, sir.
Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, September the 10th, 2014.
Chairman, I made for approval, was submitted.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, September 10th, 2014, are approved. Next, we have some special activities.
Could I ask? Jordan L. Oliver? Yes, sir. We'll go to the Employee of the Month Award Program. This program recognizes county employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present deputies Avery J. Kenny and Deborah Stephen D. Gregory. Would they come forward, please? For consideration of the Employees of the Month for April 2014, deputies Kenny and Gregory served the Frederick County Sheriff's Department and are being recognized for their commitment to Frederick County due to their high level of dedication, the life of the suicide subject was spared on the 21st of August, 2014. Deputy Kenny and Gregory portrayed an exceptional act of compassion and willingness to assist those in county. We now entertain a motion to approve Avery J. Kenny and Stephen D. Gregory as Employees of the Month for September 2014.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess and a second by Supervisor Lofton. All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes.
Avery J. Kenny and Stephen D. Gregory are hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employees of the Month for September 2014. The Board extends its gratitude to Avery and Stephen for their outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes them continued success in future endeavors.
With the Board's pleasure, we'll just take privileges here with the agenda. As you can note, Josh Phelps was unable to serve on the Economic Development Authority, and I've asked Stan Crockett if he would serve, and he has agreed, and I'd like the endorsement of the Board if his...
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton, a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Crockett is appointed to the EDA. We next have an item. Mr. Dick has turned in his resignation. He was appointed effective December 31st, and it was no surprise, as I talked to you before, Mr. Riley, with his impending resignation, retirement at the end of the year, and my desire to see him not get disengaged from the county, I am requesting that the Board give serious consideration for his appointment to replace Mr. Dick January 1st.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Mr. Riley, you will not disappear.
Thank you.
The Development Impact Model Oversight Committee, we have a resignation, but we also have Mr. Lofton, who serves in two capacities, and we would not need to refill that if I read things correctly. Do we need to take any action or get a consensus, or...
I would just get a consensus that Mr. Lofton will serve in both capacities.
Is there a consensus of the Board, anyone who objects? Mr. Lofton, you have two heads of the meeting. Only one vote.
Only one. I'll accept that, thank you very much.
Extension leadership in Opeckin, do we have anything?
Have not. We'll have it at the November meeting.
Historic Resources Advisory, Redbud?
No, sir.
And we probably need to give you some help, don't we?
I talked to Mr. Tibbs about that. I think we're tracking some leads.
All right, Historic Resources in Back Creek?
No, sir. I thought I did, but it turned out I did not. I'm still looking. I do have some help. Mrs. Turner is helping me fill that vacancy, so I feel shortly we should have someone.
Hanley Regional Library Board, Mr. Clausen has agreed to re-serve if it's a pleasure of the Board. He's Frederick County representative. It's a pleasure of the Board.
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Wells, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Clausen is reappointed to the Hanley Regional Library Board. Board of Equalization, did we get anything back from the current person?
Mr. Brumbach does not wish to be reappointed.
Okay, so we need to look?
We are looking, and we think we have some candidates, and we will have them for you at the November Board meeting.
All right. Chapter 10 Board, did we contact him? Is he eligible?
He is, and he's willing to serve.
He is a good representative.
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton and a second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion. It is Jack Alkire, I'm sorry. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Alkire is reappointed to the Chapter 10 Board. Next is the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Riley, did we contact?
It's Gainesboro District. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. I have spoken with Mr. Carpenter, and he is willing to serve again if reappointed, and I so recommend that we forward that appointment to the judge of Frederick County Circuit Court.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The recommendation will be forwarded. Next, the Human Resources Committee. Supervisor Hess.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Human Resources Committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Friday, September 12th, with all members present. The committee reviewed and discussed a request from the Public Works Director to convert a part-time position in the Inspections Department to a full-time Office Assistant III position. The funding request for converting this position was forwarded to the Finance Committee, and the H.R. Committee unanimously recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve converting this position to a full-time position, and I so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Second item, Mr. Chairman. The committee also reviewed and discussed a request from the Commissioner of Revenue to convert a part-time position to a full-time Account Clerk I position. The funding request for converting this position was also forwarded to the Finance Committee, and the H.R. Committee unanimously recommended the Board of Supervisors approve converting this position to full-time, and I so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Third item, Mr. Chairman. The committee recommended that the Board approve commencement of the rightsizing study with funding to come from the county administrator's professional services budget line item, and I so move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Next item, Mr. Chairman. Included in your packet are proposed revisions to the H.R. Committee's charter. The committee reviewed and discussed these revisions and recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve these revisions, and I so move.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The revised charter is approved.
The only other item has already been taken care of under the Employee of the Month Award, and so that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met in the first-floor conference room, 107 North Kent Street, on Monday, September 29th, at 8:00 a.m. Item numbers three and four were approved under the consent agenda, and I'd so move.
We have a motion to approve items three and four under consent agenda, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item number two, Mr. Chairman, is the Transportation Director requests to advertise for public hearing of development projects' fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $8,136,700 for the construction of Snowden Bridge Boulevard. The project will be funded through VDOT revenue sharing and matching developer funds. The committee recommends advertising for public hearing, and I'd so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
The sheriff requested general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $175,000. This amount represents funds needed for increased part-time needs for court bailiffs with the addition of three judges. Local funds are required. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The sheriff requested general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $284,781. In order to purchase 10 vehicles and associated equipment, local funds are required. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The school director of finance requests a general fund and school operating fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $108,938.58. This amount represents designated funds received during fiscal year 2014. Committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The school director of finance requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $542,593.92, and a school capital funds, projects' funds supplemental appropriation in the amount of $722,202.80. These amounts represent unspent, unobligated fiscal year 2014 funds remaining at the end and to be used for capital maintenance needs. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
By Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Public Works Director requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $11,843.00 in order to convert a part-time position to a full-time Office Assistant III position. Also required is a transfer in the amount of $14,920 from currently budgeted part-time funds. Local funds are required. The position has been approved by the H.R. Committee. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The public works director requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $11,264.00 from the currently budgeted part-time funds. Local funds are required. The position has been approved by the H.R. Committee. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The Finance Audit Committee Charter adopted by the Board of Supervisors requires an annual review and reassessment. The committee recommends approval of the charter with no changes, and I'd so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Joint Finance Committee meeting. Mr. Riley, will you present the findings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Joint Finance Committee met on October 3rd, 2014. All members were present. Discussion of the Joint Judicial Center renovations. Judge Clifford L. Athy Jr. appeared before the committee to discuss the need to renovate the Joint Judicial Center to accommodate the new judges who were approved by the General Assembly. He stated he was seeking assistance with the localities to address specific needs in the interim, which would allow the localities to work toward a long-term plan to accommodate space needs over the next 30 years. Mr. Eisenbach with the City of Winchester reviewed the proposed to accommodate the space needs. He noted that staff would engage Mosley Architects to begin the actual development of plans for the proposed renovations. He then presented two preliminary cost estimates for this project. The in-house staff estimate is $3.144,900,000, and the Mosley estimate is $4,65,500,000. The total project cost would be shared on an equal basis, 50-50, by both the city and the county. Upon motion by Mr. Schickel and seconded by Mr. McIntyre, the Joint Finance Committee recommended approval of the renovations of the Joint Judicial Center at a cost not to exceed $4,65,500,000, with the cost to be shared 50-50 basis, or $2,32,750,000 per
Questions of Mr. Riley, Mr. DeHaven, or myself? I would add that Judge Athy's intent was to give us a three-to-five-year fix. That's it.
Correct.
And hopefully during that three-to-five years, the localities can figure out what to do more long-term. This is a three-to-five-year fix.
Did you open this up for discussion, or was your just questions?
Questions first, and then we'll do the... All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry?
You need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we authorize $4,65,500,000, call shared on a 50-50 basis, not to exceed.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Now discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I have two questions now. Did the judge, I know that Judge Athy was talking about signing the emergency appropriations. Are we... Has he done that yet?
He has not.
So are we for... So we're voting to approve these funds?
Voluntarily.
Voluntarily at this particular point in time, just making the... Just setting aside those funds in anticipation that we're going to have the proper documentation? Is that...
If I might, his expectation was that based on this recommendation, both bodies would entertain this motion. He may or may not issue the proclamation, offered to issue it if it would help in the procurement to speed it up, which escapes some procurement laws. He offered to do that, and may do it, and will do it, if you don't voluntarily. But he led us to believe, Mr. Riley, you think I'm correct, that... I'm not sure he will, but he will if he's asked.
He will assist us in any way possible to get to a construction point. The purpose of the motion on a not-to-exceed number is, is there's a good possibility that the city may issue bonds to fund this particular item, which then we would be looking at an appropriation of a debt service line item rather than appropriating $2,35,000. So we have a not-to-exceed number. The project is fairly well-designed as far as the scope is concerned, and the purpose is fairly clear. It gives us a short-term solution to a long-term problem.
So I think what he said was, "I will tell you you have to, but you've told me you're going to, so the only reason I'll tell you you have to is if it helps you."
Yes, sir. I was at me, I just wanted to make sure that I understood. There was some confusion there. The other issue I'd bring up, and I've mentioned this to a few other members, is that because this is a short-term fix, I would like to see us with the city create a joint committee to look at the possibilities of what we should do in the future as far as the Joint Judicial Center is concerned. I think there are members of both the city and the county who utilize the Joint Judicial Center that would be more than happy to be a part of that discussion and have a working committee as far as that's concerned. I don't... Obviously, that's not a motion, but that's just part of the discussion as we go forward from this point.
I think that would be a quite appropriate thing for us to bring up at Joint Finance and let them structure that or come up with an alternative to it. Would you agree? Is that okay?
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure that...
Something has to happen.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question. The money that we've going to appropriate or probably approve here tonight, are there any other costs related to the relocation of some of the offices that are going to take place under the current plan?
Not to us. There is to the city.
Not to us.
That's correct.
We have additional costs, you saw them in finance from the sheriff's department related to the judges and people, but moving people, it's my understanding that those are only city offices that are moving.
That's correct.
And they are looking, or maybe they've found by now, but...
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Are you ready to vote? Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Next, the Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Transportation Committee met on September 22nd at 8:30 a.m. in the first-floor conference room. There was one action item. It's a rail crossing support request. The Winchester and Western Railroads in need of an additional crossing at Sinking Spring Lane in Gore to access a maintenance shop which they're constructing. They're requesting a resolution of support from the county as they go through their VDOT approval process, and there is a copy of the resolution proposed in your agenda, and I would move for adoption of that resolution.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resolution is approved.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman concludes my report.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have all parties present.
Could I have Jordan L. Oliver, Tom Spencer, Melvin Byrne, and Dennis and Kathy White Tonight, we have a very special presentation. I would like to recognize the following individuals and ask them to look forward to this day. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present these gentlemen for a presentation of a lifesaving award. Mr. Oliver and Mr. Spencer are employees of Frederick County Landfill Citizens Convenience Center, and Mr. Byrne is Division Chief of Division 7 Virginia Department of Fire Programs and Fairback. On the afternoon of August 21st, 2014, all three of these gentlemen performed above and beyond their normal responsibilities when they assisted in injured customers. On August 21st, 2014, a customer, Mr. Dennis White, was involved in a very serious accident at the Landfill Citizens Convenience Center while attempting to dispose of a four-foot-by-four-foot piece of glass, glass broke, and severed the brachial artery of the muscle in Mr. White's arm. Mr. Spencer and Mr. Oliver came to his aid. They laid him down, wrapped Mr. Oliver in shirk around the wound, and made a tourniquet. Mr. Byrne was at the facility disposing of garbage at the time, and assisted these gentlemen by making a tourniquet from his belt. They stayed with Mr. White until the ambulance arrived.
We are happy to report that Mr. Spencer is doing well after the emergency surgery repaired his arm. Fortunately, there was no nerve damage. As a result of the quick action to this bastard bystanders, Mr. White was able to attend his son's wedding and enjoy an already planned vacation to the beach. Their quick action helped save his life. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we'd like to extend our thanks to Mr. Spencer, Mr. Oliver, and Mr. Byrne. Their conduct on that day helped save a life. Therefore, it is my privilege to present Jordan L., Oliver, Tom Spencer, and Melvin Byrne for this life-saving award. We would like to have a motion for the board to say thank you.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Wells. All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is approved, and we will give you. Melvin. I'll get it right after I do that. And we do have one more special presentation for Mr. Oliver. Mr. Oliver utilized his T-shirt to help thank everybody. We understand the T-shirt is no longer wearable, and we are pleased to provide Mr. Oliver with a replacement T-shirt.
Next is a public hearing on proposed school board financing by the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our proposed school bond financings by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Frederick, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Frederick, Virginia will hold a public hearing in accordance with Section 15.2-2006 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended on the issuance of general obligation school bonds of the county in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million to finance certain capital projects for the public school purposes consisting primarily of the construction of a replacement middle school. A resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds will be considered by the board at its meeting on Wednesday, October 8th, 2014. And I believe the school system is present if you have any questions.
Questions for the school folks, or did the school folks wish to speak?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Riley. The amount will go to fund the services provided for site development and the foundation work through May of this year.
Questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We're now conduct a public hearing on school bond financings. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Frederick will hold this meeting in accordance with Section 15.2-2606 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended on the issuance of general obligation school bonds of the county in an aggregate amount not to exceed $15 million to finance certain capital projects for public school purposes consisting primarily of the construction of a replacement middle school. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against the board's action on this resolution? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. It was a pleasure to the board. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman? All right, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing done. Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Our next item is an ordinance to amend Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, Taxation, Article 12, Assessment for Electronic Summon System. Mr. Riley, is that you?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This ordinance results from legislation enacted by the 2014 General Assembly. It permits the imposition of a $5 fee per case in all criminal and traffic cases resulting in a conviction. The $5 fee would be retained locally for use by the sheriff to pay for the cost of implementation and maintenance of an electronic summon system. Such a system would permit the Sheriff's Department, as well as any other law enforcement agencies serving the county, namely the two towns, to print out summonses on location with the possibility of some data being downloaded directly onto the summons form and also being submitted electronically to the appropriate court, which would be savings of time at that end. At present, the sheriff's deputies must handwrite summonses, and the sheriff's office must then forward the copy to the appropriate court for manual processing by the court. That is the purpose of the ordinance.
Questions of Mr. Williams. All right, if there are none, we will now conduct the public hearing on an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, Taxation, Article 12, Assessment for Electronic Summon Systems, Section 155-47, Assessment of Cost in Criminal and Traffic Cases for the Cost of an Electronic Summon System. The amendment is enabled by legislation enacted by the 2014 General Assembly and permits the imposition of a $5 fee per case in all criminal and traffic cases resulting in conviction. The proposed fee would be retained locally to pay for the cost of implementation and maintenance of electronic summon system. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. It was a pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the amendment as written.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing done. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. The amendment to the ordinance is approved. Next is another public hearing on an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, Taxation, Article 6, Probate of Wills. Who will do this? Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item results from legislation enacted by the 2010 General Assembly. It permits the imposition of a $25 fee by the clerk of the Circuit Court for each list of errors or affidavit relating to real estate filed in probate cases in which the decedent did not leave a will. At present, in probate cases where the decedent leaves a will, the clerk collects a local probate tax of one-third of .1% of the value of the estate, with an exemption for estates valued at $15,000 or less. In the instance where a decedent does not leave a will, however, there is no fee, and the clerk of the Circuit Court indicates that the same work, if not, well, same work has to be done, perhaps if not more, by her office in processing these matters. It's not, it was before, just simply recordation of the list of errors. Now it actually has to be set up as a probate case. The clerk is here for any detailed process questions on it, but that is the purpose of the ordinance, and the draft language is before you.
We're fortunate to have the clerk with us here tonight. Did the clerk wish to speak?
If you have a question.
Are there any questions? Supervisor Lofton, whom is the question for?
The clerk.
Yes, please.
Just wanted to see your smiling face. But I want to make sure that the fee that you collect for this action will stay with Frederick County.
Yes, that $20, $25 fee per affidavit stays with Frederick County. It goes in under the county code and is transmitted to the treasurer's office.
Has no chance to be usurped by the state?
No, no chance whatsoever. It goes in under my two's money and stays local.
Thank you.
Any other questions, the clerk? Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? If not, then we'll conduct the public hearing on this ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, Taxation, Article 6, Probate of Wills, Grants of Administration, Section 155-29, Tax Imposed. Proposed amendment would add a new subsection B to permit the imposition of a $25 fee by the clerk of the Circuit Court for each list of errors or affidavit relating to real estate filed in probate cases in which the decedent did not leave a will. This proposed amendment represents an effort to treat estates with wills, effort to treat estates with wills and those without value more equitably. Is there anyone who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. It was a pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the ordinance as written.
We have a motion by Supervisor Collins. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing done. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the ordinance is amended. Next is the Planning Commission business, number one, rezoning 03-14, Governor's Hill proffer revision. Mr. Ruddy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much. This is a request to revise the proffers that were associated with rezoning 0513. That's an amendment that occurred of an original rezoning that occurred back in 2008. Of course, the original Governor's Hill was back in 2005. This specific minor proffer revision relates to two proffers, 15.2 and 15.11, within the transportation section of the proffer statement. Now, the minor proffer revision, it applies only to two parcels that are contained within the Governor's Hill project, parcels 86 and 87. For your review, on the screen to your left and also in your agenda is, of course, a general location map with the two properties, 86 and 87, highlighted with the bold black line. The balance of the orange area, if you will, is the balance of Governor's Hill, again an R4, rezoning that initially occurred in 2005 that allows for a combination of commercial uses and up to 550 residential uses. Presently, the Armory and the Public Safety Building are the two properties that developed subject to that rezoning. To get to the specifics of the one, the amendment, it deals with the amount of office space that may be developed on the property utilizing access to the existing completed section of Coverstone Drive and slight extension thereof. And of course, we're familiar with that location, that section of Coverstone Drive because it serves the Public Safety Building. Presently, the, there is a 200,000-square-foot allowance for office space to be developed on that property prior to any other components of the transportation improvements being put in place, specifically the entrance of Coverstone Drive onto Route 50, Millwood Pike. The applicant is seeking to increase that 200,000-square-foot allowance to 300,000-square-feet. Again, that's reflected in 15.2 and 15.11, and it's an increase from 200,000-square-feet to 300,000-square-feet utilizing the existing Coverstone Drive. Now, the improvement that would be triggered by the 200,000 or the 300,000 benchmark is, of course, Section A to B of Coverstone Drive as it connects with Route 50, Millwood Pike. As part of the agenda, I included the approved master development plan, and should you have any questions about Coverstone Drive in general and any of the triggers that go with that, be happy to try and answer it. Again, this is a minor proffer revision, so it's not subject to the public hearing requirement. It's allowance that was recently approved by the state of Virginia, and of course, the county has done several to that end. The Planning Commission looked at this at their last meeting and recommended approval. And of course, we're seeking a decision from the Board of Supervisors here this evening. Point out that, of course, the road connection is a very important road, part of the Kansas Eastern Road Plan. And earlier on your agenda, there was a little note in the Transportation Committee agenda, and of course, this is one of the projects, Coverstone Drive, that revenue sharing application is going to be put forward by the county. If there are any questions that the Board of Supervisors may have, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Also, representing the applicant this evening is Representative William H. Gordon Associates. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
You said there were two properties that had been developed as a, in line with this rezoning, Public Safety Building and something else?
The Armory.
The Armory, okay. Neither of those is, is the 200,000 applicable to, correct?
Absolutely correct. That 200,000 allowance was introduced in the 2008 proffer revision, which also modified some street network, but introduced that allowance for 200,000 square feet.
Okay. Mr. Williams, county staff laying on the table as a challenge to the minor proffer amendment. Is it still your counsel that it is a minor proffer amendment?
It is, and I note that that letter was not actually directed to the county proper, but yes, that's still my opinion.
Any other questions, the staff? Did the applicant representatives wish to speak? Question for the applicant? Okay. It was a pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher.
This is in Shawnee District, so I would recommend approval of the revised proffer for rezoning application 03-14.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. All right, hearing done. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. The proffer amendment, proffer revision is approved. Next, we have.
That's a rezoning amendment. It probably should be a roll call.
Okay. We will do so. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next, the Black Diamond Warehouse Site Plan Stonewall Industrial Park. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This site plan is brought to you as an informational item due to its location and its impact on the Route 37 right-of-way. Now, in an effort to keep the board, as well as the Planning Commission, apprised of any parcels that impact the 37 right-of-way, we bring them forward to both bodies as an informational item. Now, the proposal for the site plan called Black Diamond is located within the Stonewall Industrial Park on McGee Road near the cul-de-sac. You can see, properties there outlined in black. You have the Route 37 right-of-way that runs through, you know, the entire rear of the property. I'm sorry. This is the site plan for the property. It also shows the 37 right-of-way located in this area here. And as you can see, there are two building additions located within that path. So as I stated, this is an informational item, just to show that the site plan's impact on the Route 37 right-of-way. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Sort of relevant, that on your previous picture, the two parcels, whichever, above them, above the one we're talking about, are they in the industrial park too?
Yes.
Mr. Wright, he's not here.
I'm here.
This is the parcel that you and I have sat and talked to industrial park owners about many times?
Yes, sir. We met with Mr. Gilpin and provided different schematics on how the property could be developed in relationship to the right-of-way.
I think that the reason I feel somewhat compelled to say something is in previous meetings, I made statements that the industrial park needed to work with us and was maybe even a little critical, but, you know, especially with what VDOT has recently done on our construction funds, our capacity to do anything, anytime, it seems unreasonable to hold landowners up to be able to do things that you can't tell them any idea when anything will happen. So aside from our best planning, I do believe they tried, but whatever that's worth. It's sort of a correction to previous statements I may have made. Any other comments that you'd like? This is provided for information purposes only.
Sir.
I guess the only thing that we could have looked at is behind the light. But you have a site plan that indicates pretty far along with development.
Yes, sir. Following this informational item, we'll proceed with approval of the site plan.
Okay, thank you. All right, board liaison reports, are there any? Hearing done. We'll open the meeting to citizen comments of time when we allow citizens to address the board on any topic. Is there anyone here who would like to do so? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please, anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close the citizen comment portion of the meeting and move on to board of supervisors' comments. Are there any? Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, for those who are aware, this is a reminder for those who are not aware, this is a message. The 150th commemoration of the Battle of Cedar Creek will take place this month. A lot of activities taking place there at the battlefield, starting on October 15th. Most of it happens starting Friday, October 17th. There's a lot of interpretive hikes, a sunset program, cannon demonstrations, and all types of activities and programs that I think would be of interest to a great number of people. So I would put that out there so that everyone, like I say, can take the advantage of seeing this reenactment take place. It is a, your other reenactments are very well attended, and I expect this one to be exceptionally well attended.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess.
I'd just like to mention that I think we all recognize that agriculture is an important part of the economic vitality of the county and contributes to the preservation of the beautiful rural areas we have. And I'd just like to mention that the Farm Bureau and the local agricultural community held a very successful Main Street Agriculture Day on Saturday, September the 19th, in downtown Winchester, and the event was clearly attended by thousands of people from the area and from outside the area.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher.
I think sometimes, you know, we just don't know how to say thank you enough, and tonight I just have to say I'm proud to be just a small part of this organization with the staff that we've recognized this evening, the deputies and the other employees that step forward in situations and communication the caliber of staff that we have in our county, and it's a great asset, and I just can't say thank you enough.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, move adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting adjourned.